Tuesday, October 14th, 2003. First item is the Moment of Silence in the Pledge of Allegiance. And led by Mr. Sinsegali.
Have a moment of silence for all of our soldiers in Iraq, please.
Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is the approval of minutes for September 23rd, 2003. Do you have a motion to approve those minutes, please?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I will we approve the minutes of September 23rd, 2003.
Second.
The move is second. Are there any corrections? Hearing that, all of those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, abstentions? Okay. We have a couple of board guests tonight. The first is a discussion on the mentor program, and I think we have Julie Cottner here, who's going to review that with us.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. Thank you so much for having me tonight. We have some great news in regards to a survey that we gave to our mentors and mentees at the end of the school year, so we're very pleased to share some of those results with you. We currently have 54 mentors in place at schools throughout town in our middle school. We've trained another additional seven, who are preparing to bring into the system once their fingerprints have cleared. So that'll bring us up to 64 mentors in our schools. At the end of June, we were invited by the Governor's Prevention Partnership to participate in the first time that they've done a survey. And so what we did was we invited all of our mentors and mentees to fill out a survey that the Governor's Prevention Partnership had created. So we submitted those, and they were analyzed, and the results are in your packet for tonight. And the results are also in there for the state. We thought that the results of the report are very positive. Some of the examples are, the survey asked mentees how they feel their mentors helped them. And 79 percent of the students that participated in the survey indicated that they felt more comfortable, confident in themselves, while 83 percent of those completing the survey feel that there are people who will help them if they need the help. And 75 percent feel that they have more options for the future. And those all fit in with items that we want to target as part of our program. More than half of the mentees that were surveyed said that they've been earning better grades. They're showing better behavior in class, which is something that we all really appreciate. And they display a better attitude towards school. So we are very, very pleased with everything that came back on the surveys. A portion of the results were compared to a landmark study that was done by Jean Grossman. And the results actually showed that our students mentoring relationships are very strong, and our mentee scores are actually slightly better on all of the subscales that that study had done. 98 percent of the students who completed the survey felt that the program was good or excellent. And on the mentor side of it, 82 percent of the mentors thought that the mentoring program had met or surpassed their expectations. And we hear that quite frequently from the mentors, that they're getting more out of it than they think some of the students at times are. You know, that it's a very equal, or even a little bit higher for them on what they're getting from the relationship. We actually were fortunate enough to have a separate survey for our business mentors, and we have quite a few of those, a large number coming from GE. And 100 percent of those business mentors who took the survey said they have a better understanding of the education system, and feel that their attitude at work greatly or slightly improved. And they all said they didn't find it difficult taking the time away from work and coming over for an hour to our schools. So we're hoping to really capitalize on that information when we go to chamber and rotary and try to recruit more mentors. They did say in the survey that they felt that our mentors underestimated their impact on their mentee. And we find that when we meet with them, a lot of times we have to convince them that the work that they're doing is making a difference in the classroom, because what they're seeing when the children are coming out of the room, a lot of times they don't understand why the child has a mentor, because they're very well behaved with them, or they're very attentive. But for a lot of these kids, that hour is what's helping them become more attentive in the classroom. They just need an hour of time a week to spend with an adult, one-on-one, and get a lot of that extra energy out of their system maybe, or have someone that they know is listening to them. What they did find in our survey was that about two-thirds of the business mentors felt that they've received enough support and training, but we've got that one-third that says we would like to have some more. So we're going to begin working with the Governor's Prevention Partnership and bring in some speakers and work on programs to give more training to our mentors. We had a great, Amy Whitbro and I had a great opportunity this morning. We went to a chamber business school partnership breakfast in Rocky Hill. And we were able to hear from chamber presidents, superintendents, various businesses in the area that have allowed their employees to go mentor. And so we've heard a superintendent of schools who, a lot of the people in his office are getting a good kick out of it. He comes back after spending time with his mentor. His tie's a little askew, he's got his sneakers on because he's had to play basketball with the child. But the businesses all agreed that it was time well spent, and they wanted to invest in their community. We were able to see a few videos, short videos, five minutes or so, that had been put together by Hartford in Bristol for recruitment purposes. And Amy and I are really pleased, because we're going to start working with some students at the high school with the video club. And so we saw that as a great opportunity, that we'd be able to have the kids help us out and come up with some promo videos that we can bring to different events that I go to speak at. So we're excited about all the information that we got this morning, and the possibilities that it brings for our program in particular. One of our events that's coming up is October 23rd, and you've all received an invitation. We brought our mentors together for the first time at the end of last year with their mentees' families. And we had an overwhelming response. We had over 200 people that attended a pizza dinner that we had. This one, on October 23rd, we've been really blessed in being selected by the Greater Enfield Alliance for Children and Families. It's a group that consists of youth services, North Central Counseling, one of our high school social workers, and some parents are all part of this alliance. And Amy and I have been attending meetings. And we are having a big event, it's called Gift Thursday, on Thursday, October 23rd, for all of the mentors, the mentees, and all of their families. So what we're going to do is have pizza, ice cream, social services is organize some activities, which will concentrate on communication and team building. So for the families and the mentors, they'll all work together, they're going to be a team. We also have Guy Barassa and Barry Scott are going to be there, and they're going to have the digital camera, because that was a huge hit at the last event. We had all the Polarites taken of the mentors with their kids. So this year, the theme is going to be teams, working together as a team, the parents and the mentor and the child. And so we're going to have the kids come up with team names, take their pictures together as a team, and then go through the activities as a group. And we just want to thank Hood, Shaw, Stop &amp; Shop, Skidico. They're all helping us do this event, and we really appreciate it. And one last item that I wanted to bring up is that last week, I met with the director of Big Brothers Big Sisters. And as some of you might know, they had to close their office in Enfield. But Nutmeg Big Brothers Big Sisters has taken over to cover Enfield. So we're hoping to work together as a team. He had a couple of guys that were looking for some little brothers. I have a lot of little boys that need mentors. They were also talking about the idea of bridging in some communities, and we actually heard about it this morning, that some of these relationships have become so strong, a lot of ours have been together for three years, that they want to go beyond the mentoring and have something additional. So we're hoping to work with Big Brothers Big Sisters to help those matches that would like to go a little bit further, and then they would be able to go through that with a formal program like Big Brothers Big Sisters. So we were both very excited last week to get together and be able to share our resources and help each other out to expand the mentoring, which Big Brothers Big Sisters considers their program as well. So we have a lot of things going on, and we're always looking for new mentors. So Lynn has trained as a mentor, so we're very excited about that. And so we hope to expand the numbers. And next year, we'll be bringing it to the high school. The kids will be following their, the mentors will be following their children, and it'll be our first group at the high school. So we're looking forward to getting together with the high school personnel to talk about the implementation of it. And JFK has been very generous in offering to go over to the meeting with us and let them know how it's worked in their school, which we think has worked fabulous. So I don't know if anyone has any questions?
Any questions or comments? Is there a maximum number of mentors we think we could accommodate, or is it pretty much the sky's the limit?
The sky's the limit.
Okay.
Yeah. The dilemma right now is I have 10 hours a week, and that's what I started with. So I started with zero mentors, and now I'm up to, I'll be over 60 mentors. And to try to keep a handle on all the mentors in the schools, and now we're, it will be at the high school too, it's, the plate's getting pretty full in terms of the hours that I'm able to do that. And another thing I quickly wanted to mention is that Terranova, we are working with them as well. The college professors at Asnuntuck have offered to come on board and to mentor the students over there. So that's really exciting for us, too.
Julie just mentioned that she has 10 hours a week. As you know, to develop a program to this level of effectiveness, she puts in a lot more time than that. I can promise her, I sign her sheets every couple of weeks, I know that. And she's really working way beyond the number of hours to produce this program that we've authorized. She's really a part, part-time worker, 10 hours a week, but she puts a lot more time than I, you know that. You know that. But I want to say that for the sake of the audience out here as well. The statistics that she was talking about, the outcome of the survey, we get the same feedback from our principals and guidance counselors. We're seeing fewer truance, less absenteeism on the part of kids who have been at risk, and kids who, for one reason or another, have a social, willing to take on a mentor and work the mentor and mentee relationship, improve grades, we're seeing better attitude towards school, behavior, everything. So it's a win-win situation, and again, I thank Amy and Julie for their outstanding contribution. And thank the board for, you know, supporting this program in the most difficult times at all.
In Bristol today, they were one of the speakers at the presentation, and they're one of the top three programs in the state. They have over 400 mentors in their program. That woman, needless to say, is full-time plus some. She's a very dynamic person, and the Chamber of Commerce is actually a partner in that program. And that's ideally what we would like to have, is to be able to introduce more chamber and rotary, you know, people into the program. They work in town, they're very committed to the town, a lot of them are small business owners, and we'd like to have them become a part of this.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think the next guests are part of our BEST Program. If you're asking, you're going to make some presentations.
Thank you. Good evening. Like Julie, I'm going to talk about a mentoring program, but she talked about mentoring for our students, and I'm going to talk about mentoring for our teachers. As educators, we tend to speak a lot in acronym, and the BEST Program is better translated, Beginning Educator and Support Training. Basically, what it is, is a two-year program of induction for our beginning teachers. The first year is basically support through mentorship. Each teacher is assigned a mentor, and this teacher is also given enough professional development and observation to succeed in the classroom. The second year is an assessment of the beginning teacher performance through a content-specific portfolio assessment. This program was instituted in 1989 as a result of the Educational Enhancement Act. And we're proud to say that in Connecticut, our program is a model program for the rest of our country. It's so important that we have a program such as this, because research has shown that as many as a quarter of our teachers lead the profession within the first four years. And much of that is because of the lack of support by the school system. And our principals have been great, our mentors have been great in giving our brand-new teachers support. Currently, we have 150 of our teaching staff who've been trained to be mentors for our beginning teachers. Our principals have worked countless hours developing and chairing mentor teams in their school, which meet regularly with their beginning teachers. These mentor teams guide the beginning teacher with materials, they review the policies and the school culture. Sometimes it takes a year or so to even learn the school culture. They provide instructional feedback, they model reflection and effective teaching, and they assist with district assessment as well as portfolio preparation. The portfolio preparation takes place in year two. The portfolio is the end product of a process of data collection, personal reflection, and professional dialogue about teaching and learning. The teacher is asked to analyze his or her planning, instruction, student assessment and work, and then reflecting on the whole thing. The bottom line is, and how does it impact student learning? Each portfolio is scored by a state assessor. We are fortunate in our district to have four of those assessors. They are invaluable when it comes time to preparing the portfolios for our year-two folks. We have Carol Grobowski at Fermi High School, Sharon Lowery, one of our principals, works with the elementary in portfolio preparation. Bonnie Mazzoli is also a scorer in our district, as is Maureen Wazloski at the middle school. So we have each part of our school system covered by a person who's been through the process and knows how these portfolios are scored. The scorer reads the entire portfolio, examines all the student work that the teacher has to submit, and watches a video. Each teacher is responsible for putting together a video for the scorer to watch. They collect the evidence from lesson logs that the teacher gives them, commentaries, again, reexamining student work, and the assessment the teachers give to these students, and again, reviews the video. After reviewing the evidence, they analyze patterns and they compare it to other portfolios as a benchmark to determine the holistic score. Each portfolio is scored on one to four. One being conditional employment, in other words, not really acceptable. Two demonstrates a competent level of teaching ability. Three demonstrates proficient. And four demonstrates an advanced level of competence in the area of teaching. Last spring, 23 of our current staff submitted portfolios to the State Department of Education. All of our employees, all 23 of them, received scores of two, three, or four. No one in our district received an unacceptable standard. Tonight, we recognize two individuals who scored perfect fours on their portfolio projects. I'm very proud to present to the board and congratulate two of our teachers at Parkman Grade Six, Christina Nov, and at Barnard and Stowe, in the field of art, Nicole Bastiatz-Fritsch.
Congratulations. I want to say that I know personally Ms. Nov, and I can attest to the fact that she is an excellent teacher, and we should be proud of that. We have teachers such as her in the school system. Over the past eight years, I've noticed that the teaching staff seems to be getting younger and younger. And I've always been impressed by how dedicated they are, and also how enthusiastic they are. I can't say that I've come across a teacher just starting out that hasn't shown that. So I think, you know, it's a tribute to the hiring practices, but it's also, I think, a tribute to the education that they're getting and they're bringing into the school system. Correspondence and communications?
There was none that I received since.
The town council members, too?
Invite the council, okay.
Okay. Board committee reports?
The curriculum committee met, and covered a lot of territory. The latest year grade for the math curriculum was presented to the committee. It follows the same pattern as the earlier ones, and they are doing some in-service training to make sure that the teachers all understand what's going on. I'm being attacked by a fly. And I attacked it back, by the way. In addition, we got a description of the iSafe program that was presented to sixth graders at the end of last year, very quickly, and which will be again introduced in the school system this year at more grade levels, including third grade. The technology consultants at third grade level have sort of stretched themselves even thinner than they were to cover the third grade at, for 30 minutes a week. This was not in our original expectation, but they felt very strongly about it and have met the need, somehow fixed a schedule, so that the third grades could be added to as well. And that's not just the iSafe program, but technology, the use of the computer in general. The iSafe program, for those of you who, for whom you're not familiar, is an attempt to make sure that children are safe and know what to look for, or not to look for, as the case may be, or look not to have, on the Internet. And the program that was delivered last year involved the parents as well as the sixth graders, with representative, not only from our technology department, but also from our police department, to inform parents as to the potential dangers for their children on the Internet. And that each of them should be well aware of what their children are doing. The curriculum council, made up of staff members here in Enfield, is being inaugurated this year. And we've asked them to review what grant needs might be of use to the entire school system. Because before we apply for grants, we really have to know what we need and how the grants apply to what we're doing. We can't just look for grants that might bring in some money and then figure out how to use it afterwards. Besides which, your applications have to be more specific. But they should fit the needs of our curriculum and not simply as a money generation. The council will also review the curriculum townwide and make any suggestions as to improvements or places where needs addressed, need to be addressed. And then, of course, we get them at the curriculum committee. What else do I do? You're going to ask me? The K through eight science curriculum was discussed as well. I had told you at previous meetings that it would not be implemented until the beginning of next year. There are teachers who are willing voluntarily to try the curriculum this year, and it is being mandated in the seventh and eighth grade as well. So that the K through eight curriculum that I told you we could wait a bit before we approved it, could use your attention sooner, and you all have copies of it. Dr. Gallagher, did you bring the math books?
I sent them all home Friday, because I know people like to look at them over the weekend. So if they brought their own, they have, but they had the weekend to prove.
Since I had them, I didn't get one, obviously.
Yeah. Well, see, we didn't send it to the people that had it from the, we sent it to the people that weren't there.
I appreciate that, but I was afraid that we wouldn't have them for tonight's discussion. But everybody has received the math curriculum for both three and four?
Just four.
Or just four? Four is the one that's being?
I believe it was just four that we sent home, because three had approved. They had three, I believe.
No, they had not gotten the three, because we sent the three back for correction.
All right.
And they should, we should get it at some time in the future. And I think that was probably just about our curriculum meeting. We went into depth on every one of these subjects.
Any other committee reports?
Mr. Chair, over the summer, actually, the end of June, I was approached by Amy Whitbro to attend a meeting with her for the Suicide Prevention Group, which is part of the North Central Mental Health Services program. And they just wanted a board member to go to their meeting. So I said yes, and kind of got roped into being part of their group. And I wanted to report to the board that, one, they changed their name. They are the Greater Enfield Alliance for Children and Families. The name was changed because they wanted to be more proactive to mental health for everyone in the community from the very beginning, as opposed to focusing just on suicide. And they have, as a group, become active in bringing forth mental health activities to the family in this area. They are actually sponsoring an event in October for the mentors and mentees here at JFK. And so they're hopefully going to be sending a message on positive mental health, positive outlook in life, self-esteem, and all of that. And I will keep you posted as to other things they attempt to do, and when I get a date on this event, I will let you know.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, unfinished business. First item is the policy revision to number 1330, the use of school facilities. We already had the first reading on that, this is the second and final reading.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If we approve this, are we also approving the fee schedule as well?
We can approve them separately.
The reason I'm asking is because I believe Dr. Gallagher had indicated that he'd come up with additional information about rooms?
No. What I said was that I was trying to have Art work with me to get into the classrooms. One of the, you know, one of the things you have is the main areas are the auditoriums and the gyms and the larger rooms. We have some people that are using classrooms, and we were thinking about a specific dollar fee for classroom. But if you have someone that's using, let's say, 12 classrooms in the building at that same rate, we just really thought it was too high. We were talking a $50 per classroom rate, and we have some people, I know we would just price them right out of there if we did $50 a room. So what we're trying to do is come up with something. I think we can bring that back to you at a later time for the classrooms. But I definitely think, at least from where we're sitting, we're ready to go with the gymnasiums and the cafeterias and the auditoriums, and that constitutes the bulk of the usage that we have. So we did send out, probably, I think it was 23 or 24 people on the list. Art went through and got the major users. We sent them the material that you got a couple of weeks ago, within a week or two of the board meeting. We told them it was a second reading, we told them it would be being discussed tonight. I have not received one word from anybody on anything. I didn't hear back from anybody with it. So I'm hoping that the silence means that they think that we were fair with it. I still know that to go from, I think it was $50 or $70 for the auditorium to up to $300, it sounds like quite an increase. But when you stop and think that you're getting an auditorium with a performance stage, an orchestra pit, and room to sit 600 people or more, it really is a bargain. You couldn't go anywhere in town and rent that for $300. So maybe people are looking at it realistically and just saying, you know, that is fair, we're using it for fundraising if we sell every seat. You know, just increasing their cost by a dollar or two a person is more than going to cover the rental fee if, in fact, they sell out their performances, which, from what I understand, some of them do, they pretty much fill the auditoriums, so.
So we will use the old fees for rooms?
For the classroom, I think we just continue with the old fee for the classroom, but we're recommending- recommending the new fees that were in your packet for the other rooms.
Thank you.
The only concern is the nonprofit organizations that aren't school-related, like, say, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, that sort of thing.
As long as they're not doing for profit. The whole thing that you're getting into, the ones that are paying those fees, if they're doing a profit, so if the Boy Scouts are doing a major fundraiser and they're in there raising monies, they could be subject to it. They could be subject to it. And I think part of it, we would take into consideration what they're doing. Typically, they don't ask for the auditorium, but we don't have the Boy Scouts using that. They want to use the gym or something like that. And if they have a, if they were in there and doing a candy sale or something like that as part of their gym, like, we're not considering that for profit. You know, if the Girl Scouts were sitting there with a table and they had candy, that's not, I think what we're talking about are people that are coming in, they're basically booking an event. You know, they've got a lot of people walking in and out, people are buying tickets, there's a lot of money being exchanged, and that's what we're trying to pin down. We're not looking to go to someone that has a little corner booth there and some little Daisy Scout is selling, you know, picnic baskets or something, you know.
Mr. Chair, some of the confusion on that, if you turn to, I believe it's the third page, line 130, 129, 130, 131, over under fee, it says rental fee and associated costs. The words "in fundraising activities" belong after the word "engaged." That's the way it was originally written?
And you tried to correct last time.
And I tried to correct last time, and it came out totally backwards. The only word that was supposed to be moved over last time was "costs." So if you read it, "activities of a nonprofit organization," covered under category for "engaged," doesn't make sense. So.
Engaged.
They're engaged, but who knows what they're engaged in? So, you know, that's just a typographical error, and I think that would clear up your question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
In addition, if you'll read lines 141 to 144, which does allow waiver, it does seem to be appropriate, which is that loophole that is available to our superintendent.
Okay. Anybody else? Can I have a motion to accept this policy, then?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Enfield Board of Education approve the revised policy, number 1330, use of school facilities and the fee schedule as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments? A roll call, please.
Mrs. Skell?
Yes.
Mrs. Racine?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Holinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Sinsegali?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion passes.
Next item, unfinished business, is the vote-ag agreement.
Just to refresh everyone's memory on this, back on September 9th, the Enfield Board reviewed a proposal that was approved by the Suffolk Board for a agreement for the vocational agriculture program that differed slightly from the original document that Mr. Troy and I had crafted. And the Enfield Board tabled any action on that agreement pending a response from Suffolk to some questions and some counterlanguage to the Suffolk proposal, which I got out to the Suffolk Superintendent immediately following the meeting. He told me, or Superintendent Troy told me that he met with his board, presented them with that material, they reviewed it, and they were unable to reach a consensus on the counter proposals presented by Enfield. From what I understand, they didn't have a caucus. They started with a caucus, people left, they didn't have a caucus to finish it. So basically, I think at this point, we're, in my mind, we're at two places. One, we could either activate a subcommittee to meet with the subcommittee of the Suffolk Board and discuss it, or you could approve the agreement that the Suffolk Board did approve and sent back to the Enfield Board for approval. And personally speaking, I've listed my reasons. I really think that it would serve everyone's best interests to approve that agreement. It contains the language talking about the cap. It provides the discount beyond the 50 seats. It provides an avenue to discuss the selection criteria. It provides the Enfield Board the predictable cost for the program over the next four years, and it's also giving both boards the opportunity to talk about either continuing or discontinuing the relationship in the third year of the four-year relationship. So my feeling is that we should approve, you should approve, the Regional Agroscience Center Agreement between the Suffolk and Enfield Boards of Education for the period indicated, based on the copy that we had September 9th, and I've included that original copy in there. When we redo it, we'll type it so it doesn't have the different script in there, but we would do it that way if, in fact, that's what the board wants to do. So from the administration, that's what we're recommending.
So I guess all we need now is just a motion to adopt the revised agreement?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, we tabled it at our last meeting, so I'd like to move that we remove it from the table.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. A roll call.
Mrs. Skell?
Yes.
Mrs. Racine?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Holinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Sinsegali?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman? I move the Enfield Board of Education approve the Regional Agroscience Center Agreement between Suffolk and Enfield Boards of Education for the periods of July 1st, 2003, to June 30th, 2007, as approved by the Suffolk Board.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Are there any comments or questions?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I believe that we should immediately start the process of evaluating the criteria as this agreement will allow.
Okay. Dr. Gallagher, did they ever give us an answer to the question about, they had sent out letters to 27 saying that they were deemed acceptable? Beginning of the school year five, they dropped out of the program, and yet they've been replaced?
No, they didn't answer anything. We had those questions in the memo that we sent out, and you received copies of that. And I did not get any responses back, but that's something we can discuss when we discuss the criteria. And as the document says, we're to begin that process by October 15. So we will make that a priority and sit down with them and start talking about how exactly are they selecting people and what is the criteria.
Would we do this by the subcommittee, or would we?
This would be through the administration, would be through the administration's staff, is where it would be. I'd like to get a copy of the document that they use now to score the... The current one? We can get you a copy of that. They provide us with that. I'd like to get a copy of that.
And there was no response on the Metropolitan Learning Center, and if a student moved from Enfield to Suffolk?
No other, the only comment that he had was that they didn't act on it, they'd lost their quorum, they didn't act on it, and that was it. There was no answers to any of the questions that you asked or anything like that. Although I would assume they'd have concerns, too. I mean, here was an intake process that suffered approximately a 20% drop in the intake. So I would think, when you take a look at the fact, you know, you dropped five or six kids out of there, I would think they'd be concerned with it as well. So I know it's part of it, we're ready to talk to it. The other thing you have in there is, in the agreement, the Suffolk administration is willing to come over with their staff and explain the program to you all as well. So that's something that, we can schedule that, maybe prior to them doing their intake for the next year. You'd have an opportunity to hear what they're planning to do. You could ask questions about the program, if you want to visit the program. I'm sure they'd be more than happy to have you go over there. So there's a lot of opportunities yet to dialogue about exactly how are things being done and what are the criteria.
In addition to the criteria from Suffolk, can we get copies from the Bloomfield and Rockville programs?
We could poll to see what other places do as well. You know, there's 16 or 17 ag centers, we could do that. And I assume you probably could even go on the Internet and get on a search engine and find some intake from other states as well. There's lots of different processes to go through. We'll work on all of those things and keep you informed.
Any other questions or comments? A roll call, please.
Mrs. Skell?
Yes.
Mrs. Racine?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Holinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Sinsegali?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion passes.
Adoption of the fourth grade math curriculum? Do you want to address that, Joyce?
As with the first four, continuing with first, second, and third, here's our fourth grade math curriculum, which was produced by a very dedicated group of staff members, including Chuck Torrey, who has our elementary math chair, and the math consultants in the schools. To the point where they even worked on their own time, to a large extent, including filling in all the graphics, which are very entertaining, and writing all the notes necessary, the answer pages to go along with the various practice exercises during a weekend celebration party, surprisingly, at the Cape. But that is not the critical part of the math curriculum. It is its effectiveness in getting the idea of math and not making it a scary subject to all of our elementary schools and to at least one member of our board, whose math curriculum is being relieved by this curriculum. So I strongly recommend that we, again, at this time, adopt a fourth grade math curriculum as you have seen it for the weekend. Therefore, I move that the Enfield Board of Education adopt the new fourth grade math curriculum.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments?
I just wanted to know if Joyce passed the test at the end of the curriculum?
We were not given the test, but I'm sure after we've studied the whole book, we would be very easily able to...
That's encouraging.
One of the comments that was made during the review of the CMT results is that they would integrate CMT-type problems into the curriculum. And since the CMT is constantly changing, I assume that problems have been incorporated into the curriculum, and are they going to update it?
Your assumption is correct, and the update will be done. Chuck Torrey has been on top of the standards required at every grade level from the state from the very beginning, and he has incorporated them, including a checklist of skills in the book that you must have been through.
I noted that.
And those are the standards that are required. And an individual student is to be tested until they've reached proficiency. So there's at least three tests for each standard that will be done. And yes, future standards, and we are promised that they will be modified frequently in the future, without the additional money to update the manuals, of course, but we will do it anyway.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Skell?
Yes.
Mrs. Racine?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Holinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Sinsegali?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion passes.
The last item under new business is the organizational meeting of November 18th, for the seating of the new board. I think we wanted to do that as a special meeting.
Typically, that's what the board's done. The first thing I call your attention to is the 18th. My memo to you a week ago, in the update, I think I put down the 19th, and I wanted to be careful on this, so I double-checked with Suzanne Olinicki, and Suzanne Olinicki is telling me this year it is the 18th. You can be seated on the 18th, and she gave me a copy of the state law that says, you know, when they can be seated. But as we said there, I won't repeat all of it. Traditionally, we haven't scheduled a meeting for the first, excuse me, for the second Tuesday following the election, because the election was the week before. And we don't meet, you've got that in your calendar for this year, there's no meeting scheduled the second Tuesday of November. But traditionally, the board has called a special meeting, which is also your organizational meeting, and that is in your Board Policy 9340, if you wanted to follow what the organizational meeting tells you who chairs it and how they vote and all of these kinds of things. And what we have done at that typically is give the oath of office. Suzanne can come that night. She mentions that if a board member that's elected cannot meet that night, she can swear them in, probably at any time during the business day. But she does remind us that the board members have to take, the board member has to take the board, the oath of office before they can sit with the board. And at this meeting, traditionally, that's what we've done. The board goes through their election process for officers. In the past, and again, it might be different because you have different people coming in, but in the past, the couple of years, I think, what Bill Thompson has done, he's been elected chair, and he asked you at that time if you have an interest in any of the committees, and gave you a week or two to think about it. And then they started forming committees at the following meeting, which, there is one the very next week. We have a regular meeting the very next week after this date. And then we normally just either start in the cafeteria or we'll break into the cafeteria, and they've recognized the old board members going out, shouldn't call them the old board members, the outgoing board members. And then they break into the cafeteria for some cookie and coffee, and it's really kind of just a chance to meet people. And normally, we have some council members come over for it, and some people from the various political committees, and friends and relatives of the board members. And it's a fairly nice event. So basically, that's what you've done in the past. But if you want to do that again this year, you need to declare a special meeting. You can do that tonight if you want to, and we'll schedule it and get busy on that night.
Dr. Gallagher, had we in the past also been involved in the Friends of Education presentations?
That comes a little bit later. That normally comes a little bit later than this. And sometimes that has fallen on the same night, and we've tried to fold that in. But normally, that comes during American Ed Week, which I think is the first week, excuse, I think it's the week of the board meeting. But we've tried to fold them in together if we can, but we all, not always, but we will check with the ETA, and if it falls that week, if that's American Ed Week as well. I haven't received that yet. We've done that as well, so.
So do we need a motion to establish a special meeting for purposes of an annual organizational meeting of the board? Mr. Chair? Yes. I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education establish a special board meeting for November 18th for the purpose of the oath of office and the organizational meeting for the new board.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Are there any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Skell?
Yes.
Mrs. Racine?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Holinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Sinsegali?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion passes.
All right, we have a need to go into executive session for personnel issues and matters related to grievances. Have a motion to that effect, please.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, abstentions? Go into executive session.
We'll go to the lounge, I believe, and Mr. Cook is going to join the board in executive session.